Hello and welcome to the Northeast Ohio Media Group debates. I'm Bruce Geiselman. Today, we're hosting a debate for Lakewood City Council, which is up for election November 3rd. The candidates will introduce themselves in a minute, but first, here are the rules. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. Then, we'll ask questions, giving each candidate 90 seconds to answer and a minute for follow-up. At the end, we'll allow 10 minutes for the candidates to ask each other questions with 60 seconds permitted for the answers. So, let's get started. The candidates with us today are Ward 1 incumbent David Anderson and his challenger Patrick Metzger. We have Ward 2 challenger Paul Begon and the incumbent Sam O'Leary. And finally, at the end, we have Ward 3 candidates, John Litten and Mark Schneider, both of whom are looking to fill a seat that's being vacated at the end of the year. So, Mr. Anderson, you can go first if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us why you're running.
Very good. Again, thank you for having us here tonight. I think this will be a good valuable opportunity for the city of Lakewood to learn more about city council and candidates. So, as you said, my name is David Anderson. I've served on Lakewood City Council since 2011. I filled an unexpired term earlier that year and won a full four-year term that November. I am a proud husband and father of four Lakewood school kids. I own multiple properties in Lakewood, so I have businesses there as well. My goal from day one of serving on Lakewood City Council has been to help all neighborhoods meet and exceed their full potential, that includes services, quality of the 14,000 homes, making sure our business districts are up to where they need to be. And I'm looking forward to making sure that we have another four years of that kind of progress. And I just want to say a quick comment about the other candidate for Ward 1. I don't consider him my challenger. I consider Mr. Metzger the candidate, and I helped appoint him and helped make him part of the Planning Commission. And I'm glad that the city of Lakewood's Ward 1 has a choice between candidates for this election. So, I'm glad to be up here with Pat, and again, thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Metzger?
Sure. I'm Pat Metzger, candidate for the Ward 1 Lakewood City Council. I'm glad to be up here. I'm glad to be able to be in the city and run for this seat. It's a great place to live. We have a lot of potential. I've lived in Lakewood since 1997, and I'm there with my wife and my three kids, who are Lakewood Catholic Academy students. And like Dave said, I've been on the Planning Commission now for probably three years, I think, as the appointment is a long-term appointment. And prior to that, I was on the Citizen Advisory Committee for several years, too. So, I have a lot of experience working around the city and been involved quite a bit, and I'm glad we can be here tonight for this forum.
All right. Mr. Begon?
Hi. Paul Begon. I have lived on Summit Avenue for 15 years, where me and my wife have decided to raise our family. I have three children, from 15 down to eight years old, all born and raised in Lakewood. And that's really the impetus for me deciding to run for council, is Lakewood is where I live, it's where I raised my family, it's where I have my business. I'm an architect, and I have a business on Madison Avenue. I also own two buildings on Madison Avenue as well, too, some rental properties. I've been involved, really, since 2003 in city Lakewood. That's right after Number 2 was born. I thought, if I'm going to stay here, if this is where I'm going to raise my family, I need to get involved. So, I've been involved in many things, from Lakewood Alive on the board there to my parish at St. Luke as well. So, I'm looking forward to continue my service to our community and make Lakewood a better place.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
Thanks, Bruce. And I also want to thank my fellow candidates tonight for being able to share the time and Northeast Ohio Media Group for hosting us tonight. My name is Sam O'Leary. I'm the current Ward 2 Councilman. I first ran for Lakewood City Council in 2013 in the at-large race and was subsequently appointed in January 2014 to the vacant Ward 2 seat to fill out the remainder of that term. Prior to that, I served on the Lakewood Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as the Lakewood Tax and Incentive Review Council, and have a number of experiences, having grown up in Lakewood and always had an eye towards service, that I think have applied well in my service so far, which certainly, it's been a somewhat tumultuous time for Lakewood. I think Lakewood is always a community on the move and has always been dynamic. And that's, I think, one of the great challenges that we face now, but have always faced, is how we buffer our vibrant neighborhoods from our incredibly expanding and fantastic businesses. And I look forward to taking on that challenge ongoing. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Litten?
Thank you. John Litten. I'm the Executive Director of the St. Vincent de Paul Society, covering Northeast Ohio in a blanket of charity for the last 150 years. Born in Lakewood, plan on being here for a very long time. I'm a graduate of St. Edward High School, married a Lakewood high girl, and Carrie, my wife. We've owned two houses now in Lakewood, on Wyandotte, and then on Chesterland, with our three children, Josh, Brendan, and Amelia, who keep us very busy. Speaking of which, you know, that busyness with our kids has caused me to be a coach, to volunteer on different boards and different things in Lakewood, and to just get involved in every way that I possibly can. It's about our community. It's about the place I love and making it as good as we possibly can. I also want to thank the voters of Ward 3. Forty-seven percent of the vote in the primary last week was overwhelming. It's something I don't take for granted, and will work very hard to earn that vote again in November. Thank you.
And Mr. Schneider, please.
Thank you. I'm Mark Schneider. I'm running for Ward 3 Council. I work right now as an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney and Assistant Law Director for the city of Parma Heights. I'm also a former state representative and also a former and assistant Cuyahoga County prosecutor. I've spent 15 years, my entire adult life, in public service. I want to bring that experience at the city, county, and state level of government to work for my community in Lakewood. I'm active in my community through St. Luke's Parish, through the West Sorrento Bar Association, through the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Lakewood Rocky River Sunrise Rotary Club. I want to bring that experience to work so that we could focus on safety, economic development, and keeping up our city services in Lakewood, the real issues that matter to this community. I'll fight tirelessly for the people of Lakewood, the same way I've fought my whole career in public service.
Okay. Very good. Well, let's move on to the first question, then, and I don't think this will probably come as a surprise to anybody. The most controversial issue facing Lakewood today is the future of Lakewood Hospital. What are your feelings about whether the hospital can be preserved, and how should health care be delivered in the future? And let's start with Mr. Anderson.
Well, first of all, I appreciate the sentiment of the question. As you know, Bruce, on council now, there's a lawsuit involved, there is executive sessions involved with our legal representatives, so there's parts of that question I simply cannot get into tonight. However, I can make a comment about some of my concerns dating back to January concerning the process and how this issue actually got before city council last January. And I'm thankful that my colleagues on city council, after initially having a lot of questions, voted unanimously with my sentiment that we identify our own independent consultant to really analyze all the issues that are involving Lakewood Hospital, especially the financial, the national trends. So, that analysis provided us, at least to a degree, with some real unbiased, objective, unvarnished opinions that we're using to move forward. As far as some of the particulars of what's been provided and where we might be able to go forward, simply, I just can't get into that. I wouldn't want to divulge any information that might be construed as a negotiating point. So, I respectfully decline to get into that question, I think to the degree that you would like me to. I'd say no. I hope you understand that.
All right. Mr. Metzger?
Well, you know, I'm no health care professional, but it seems like a lot of people in the community have suddenly emerged as knowing how the trend should go. But, you know, you just have to kind of go with that a little bit. First of all, in Lakewood, a lot of churn and redevelopment and other types of new things come into the community have always been a hallmark in Lakewood. And I don't have any doubt that the current administration and the staff has the creativity to pull off new developments, should it happen, around this new hospital concept that's out there. I think the idea of having a new facility constructed in Lakewood, right there on Detroit, is a great idea. But that being said, I think that publicly available documents, like the letter of intent and stuff, are really a stinker of a deal for Lakewood and don't involve benefiting the city on the whole, because the scraps are left to the city in this deal, and the meat is left to the large corporation that's running. Now, there's nothing wrong with that, because there's always deliberations where your big corporations take place. But I think clinic needs to come back to the table with a different offer, and the city should be strong and hold out and negotiate this better, which I think they're on track now, having it administratively negotiated through the law department, and it's a good start.
All right. Mr. Begon?
Thanks, Bruce. This is a pot that's been on the stove for a longer time than has been in the news as of recently. So, it really started gaining traction earlier this year. But in reality, Lakewood Hospital Association and the city have been looking at this for years. The end of the lease with the Cleveland Clinic, with the Lakewood Hospital Association, and the future of the hospital, that end date has been known for a long time. So, I applaud the foresight of Lakewood Hospital Association and the city to look forward to see, all right, what's next, instead of waiting until the end of the line when there isn't a deal that can be made. So, I think the representatives of Lakewood Hospital Association and the city have done a good job in trying to manage the situation. Obviously, change is difficult, especially when it comes to health care and Lakewood Hospital. All three of my children were born in Lakewood Hospital. I've taken my kids to the emergency room there. So, I understand the connection and wanting to have a hospital in your city. But health care is changing, and moving forward is, I think, what needs to happen at this time, and I think we're going about it the right way in a methodical, understanding manner.
All right. And Mr. O'Leary?
Thanks. I, like David, have to be cognizant of some sensitivities with respect to ongoing negotiations and some of the confidentiality that's at play there, but I will do the best I can, nonetheless, to address the question. And I would say that I think the two watchwords that we should be mindful of here are objectivity and accountability. I think that it's council's role here to take an objective role in reviewing this proposed transaction on behalf of the city. The city's interests, I think, are slightly different than the Hospital Association, which is looking at this from a purely health care delivery-oriented standpoint, and the city, obviously, has that as a primary concern, but a number of other major concerns as well, particularly with respect to payroll tax and other things. So, I think that as we examine the hospital issue going forward, again, objectivity, accountability have to be the refrains of the day. And I would say one more thing in addition to that, that, well, I think it is important that we're always looking ahead to the dates that we know for certain. I also think that we need to be aware of the fact that there are some forces at play here that are frankly urban sprawl and outmigration, and Lakewood needs to start to think in a global way, in a big way, about how we address that problem. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Litten?
Thank you. So, Lakewood Hospital is a place that I care deeply about. My father's life was saved at Lakewood Hospital. He had a heart attack at the Lakewood Wyandotte, was rushed over there, and they saved his life. In the same week, my father-in-law had a stroke and was there as well, so we had to get a sitter to go visit our dads at Lakewood Hospital. It was at that point that I realized how important community health care is. We need the best 30- to 50-year answer on this. We need to find something that is sustainable over the long term so that we can best serve not only us, but our children and our children's children over a long period of time. We need to fight, at this stage, we need to fight for things like an emergency room. We need to fight for basic services for our seniors, like testing, blood tests, things like that, diabetes care, primary care, so that we can help keep people well rather than worrying about things after the fact.
All right. And Mr. Schneider?
The Lakewood Hospital issue is one where the voters of Ward 3 have a sharp contrast in opinions. I respect John. He's a fellow parishioner at St. Luke's with me. However, as a member of the Lakewood Hospital Association Board of Trustees, he's already cast his vote to close the hospital and adopt the clinic's proposal. I respectfully disagree with that. I think the hospital issue comes down to three main points: access to health care, jobs, and transparency. Access to health care. Eighty percent of the residents I've met at the doors, particularly the elderly, depend on Lakewood Hospital as their sole source of inpatient care. I think they deserve somebody to fight for inpatient care, and that's what I would do. In addition to that, jobs. This is something where we, this issue could cause 1,100 jobs to leave the city. When you're dealing with an issue that big, you'd better make sure it's transparent and the public is involved. And that ties into the third issue, transparency. All meetings need to be decided by council. Council is the proper body to deliberate this. They have to have independent representation, any consulting that they need, as well as all resources, and do this in the public, because it's the public's interest.
May I respond?
Well, let's, does anybody down here want to respond, or should we just go to Mr. Litten?
I'll let John.
Okay.
Well, I just think in the situation that we're in, it's not a black and white issue. It's some shade of gray, and that we need to look at it from the perspective that we need a willing partner in order to have health care in Lakewood. So, I'm all for having inpatient beds and all those sorts of things in Lakewood if we have a willing partner that can do so. I also think the public debate is happening now, and I think we all need to be aware of that, that there is a public debate that occurs daily in our city that people can participate in. I don't think it's something anyone's being shut out of.
And again, if you, the voters in this ward have a clear distinction between the two candidates. If you want to debate this issue behind closed doors for two years before it's foisted on the public, I'm not your candidate. If you want to short-circuit the public debate on this process, I'm not your candidate. Mr. Litten has cast his vote for the Cleveland Clinic's proposal. I'm for fighting for a better deal. I'm for fighting for the best deal for Lakewood and fighting for inpatient care and making it a transparent process.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to the next question, then, unless anyone else has anything. Now, if Lakewood Hospital closes, or is downsized, which has also been discussed as a possibility...
Oh, what was that last part?
If Lakewood Hospital is closed or downsizes, that's another possibility that's been discussed, making a smaller hospital. What would you like to see go onto the six acres or whatever amount of property is available there for development? And then, I guess, we'll start with Mr. Metzger on this one.
Oh, sure. In a recent public meeting held by the Planning Commission, or the Plan Department and the administration, several proposals came across the table. And I think that, like I said previously, the city's really got a lot of the creativity and drive to bring any one of those forward. And if it's going to be paired with a new facility that the clinic builds, I think that those things will play off of each other in a very successful way.
Mr. Begon?
Yeah, I mean, as...
Excuse me, guys.
That's all right. As an architect and a planner and being on the chair of the downtown Lakewood Design Committee, I have tons of ideas. I don't think we're at that point yet, though. I think we need to come together as a city and be supportive of the direction that we're taking with the hospital. Like Mr. Schneider said, speaking with the people of Ward 2, they're divided. There's a knee-jerk reaction. You're closing your hospital? Don't do that. And you have people that are ready to move on and take Lakewood into the future. Both have very good points. So, I think that information, I think, is out there and available, and I think when people read through the information that's been made public, when they attend the council meetings and all the other meetings that are happening surrounding here, you get a better understanding of really the direction it should be. What we don't want in Lakewood is another 2002, 2003 issue 47 where the city is doing something behind closed doors. And I don't think anybody's doing that right now. What we need to do is, as a whole, as a city, come together and understand the issue, get to a common direction where everybody, even though they may not be happy, can at least get behind the direction that we're going. So, I think once that happens, then we can talk about all the fun stuff. What's next? Is it new housing? Is it new, obviously, the new health care facility and the emergency department and everything else? I think that's a second step. I don't think we're there yet.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
Thanks. I would say that I think it's important that we keep several things in mind as we contemplate the future for that site. As I mentioned before, I think that one of the most critical issues surrounding the hospital is the potential loss of jobs. And so, if and when the hospital should close, our way forward from that would have to be mindful, I think, of the hole that that creates in our downtown. The hospital is the eastern edge of Ward 2, but it's the heart of downtown. And I think that we need to be very aware of the impacts that that might have on that neighborhood, which has enjoyed tremendous success over the past several years with numerous redevelopment and improvements. I would also say that directly across the street from the hospital, just north of Lakewood Center North Building, is St. Charles Green, which I've been getting the ball rolling to formally designate that as a park. And I think that it is important that that area of downtown continue to enjoy significant green space and park opportunities, because that's what part, that's what is part of what makes our neighborhoods and our businesses so great, and it's a fantastic resource for those neighborhoods. So, I think green space is important to keep in mind as we talk about development.
Okay. And John Litten, again, it's what would you like to see in terms of development on that property if something happens?
Sure. And I echo the sentiment of some of the other candidates that we simply need to determine what's going to happen with the hospital first before we can begin to determine what fun stuff can happen from there. There is some opportunity there. I do think there's some economic development opportunity in the heart of Lakewood, of course. However, we've got a building there now that two independent reports have said will cost $90 million just simply to bring to today's standards. And that's just today's standards, not the standards of the future of health care. So, I think that's something we need to address, and also, anything new that could go in or would go in to that space needs to be done with our neighbors, Han Bell and Marlow and surrounding that area, in mind, so that it isn't something put in that would adversely affect their quality of life on their street.
All right. And Mr. Schneider?
And this is another point where it shows the division between my friend, Mr. Litten, and myself. While I know John is looking to the future, because he did cast his vote to adopt the clinic's proposal and close the hospital, those 1,100 jobs leaving the city would be very difficult to have anything take its place. I think we are putting the cart before the horse when we talk about redeveloping, when two of the people at this table are still deliberating what the city's best move should be. That being said, in general economic development terms, I could tell you, we've got three large employers in the city: the hospital, the schools in the city. We've got an industrial section along Veria Road, but other than that, we have 2,400 small businesses, between two and three employees per business. Whatever we look, whenever we look at developing, especially a large parcel in downtown, a piece of property, we have to keep that in mind, that we need to attract investment that's going to trigger the most amount of jobs possible, whether it be office space, medical facilities, whatever that might be. Because if we lose 1,100 jobs in this city, anybody sitting at this table is going to have to work doubly hard.
Bruce, if I could also respond?
Well...
Provide a response or... So, I would just briefly add that I think that there are a number of things, even though I think it's correct that we're still in a contemplative and deliberative position, primarily, I think that there are a number of things that Lakewood can do to position the city for economic development success, and I think that we are doing those things, including, most recently, possibly taking steps towards fiber optic cable down Detroit and Madison and other areas of the city that will potentially allow future businesses and current businesses greater economic opportunity within the city. So, I think that even though we're in a position of contemplating the future, there are actions that we can take and are taking now to prepare us for success.
Okay. And Mr. Anderson, you haven't had a chance to answer yet.
Yeah, just a quick re-comment about the fact that we are in a formal negotiating process with the Cleveland Clinic, so I am not going to comment on the 6.2, 3.8, however many acres are on that site. But in general terms, and I'm sure Pat would agree with this as well, that it is about highest and best use. And it's not just highest and best use for this term, whoever's the mayor, whoever's on the planning commission, but two or three generations from now. I've always looked at the decision-making process that I've had on council, whether it be about a budget or an economic development opportunity, say McKinley Place, or new housing coming into town on Sloan. What's going to make Lakewood more sustainable for three mayors from now, for three city councils from now? It can't be about the next four years. It can't be about lining up the books to get through the 2020s, right? We need to be talking about the next generation and a half, and I think the highest and best use could mean a lot of things. I'm personally of the opinion, Mr. Schneider, that we have a lot more businesses than that in Lakewood. We have close to 6,000 rental properties in Lakewood, homes that are designated as rental properties. I look at each of those as a business. And so, I think there's a lot more we can do besides just focusing on a downtown chunk of real estate that would provide a better, more robust roadmap to Lakewood's future, sustainable future, 2050 and beyond. So, I sort of take the longer view on these things, and I would on this situation as well. So, thank you.
All right.
I'd just like to point out on jobs. Jobs are, of course, important to our city and are a part of our lifeblood and what helps to keep our budget balanced and all those sorts of things. What we need to compare it to, though, is not just 1,100 jobs now or for the next couple of years as we try to sustain a hospital, but we need to compare it to the fact that we might have zero jobs on that site if we just ride out the current lease through 2026. And I think we all, as a populace, as Ward 3, as all of Lakewood, need to bear in mind that we stand to risk losing everything if we don't act, in some fashion act. We could end up with zero jobs in that site.
You know, Bruce, since we brought it up, you know, I know this letter of intent thing is kind of expired, and it's out of the gate, and there's a lot of discussion about it, just to the point of the future. We want to have the, I think people want to have the clinic there. I think you want to have them there long-term. But when you look at this key component part in Section 2, the clinic's already setting itself up for its next iteration, for when it needs to exit from that point, and then it leaves the city with a lot of loose ends to deal with there. So, there's no guarantees for the city, long-term, for the clinic there? It goes right back to the question you asked, what is a good use for it? I think the clinic and this new thing, this new facility, is a great use for it, and it's got to be guaranteed by the clinic, and it's got to have guarantees for the good of Lakewood in there. And I think that this agreement should have stopped right here and been sent back to them because of business with nothing in the future, potentially.
Okay. I guess your time's expired. I just want to clarify, then, you're saying you'd like to see a time commitment from the clinic, is what you're saying?
I would like to see financial guarantees from the clinic and clawbacks that leave them with a fair share of the risk against what's going to be in Lakewood, if they're going to invest in that site and they're going to claim to have the right to leave the city with the building and first rights of refusal, and then the ability to sell it to third parties unknown. I think the clinic's got to come back to the table with a firm agreement, financially and timeframes.
Okay. Anyone else have a response, or should we move on to the next question?
Just, again, touching on the, when we talk about economic development, Bruce, the term Lakewood Alive has been brought up here, which is a great public-private partnership that serves as an economic development arm for our community. And I think that is the future of economic development in cities that are called upon to do more with less resources. And whenever we're talking about developing large tracts of lands or trying to attract investment, I think public-private partnerships like Lakewood Alive are an excellent tool for the city, and we ought to be taking a look and talking to those folks.
Okay. Well, move on to the next question, and this is the last one about the hospital. It's not all going to be about the hospital. But a citizens group has put a charter issue on a ballot that would require a vote of the residents before council could close or reduce services at the hospital. Do you favor or oppose this measure, and why? And I guess we're starting with Mr. Begon this time.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the great thing about this is we have a bunch of different candidates with different points of view, and I think reflects a lot what Lakewood's going through right now and has been going through. There are residents, and obviously candidates alike, that are on different sides of this issue. Yeah, I'm absolutely in favor, having the residents have their say. You know, on the board for Lakewood Alive, when we put the mission statements together, Lakewood's greatest asset is informed and engaged residents. So, this is all good stuff, and what we want to do. We want the residents to be involved in a vote. I do have to echo a little bit of some of the concerns that the current administration has about the wording that that's been on there. What we don't want to do in any negotiation is tie anybody's hands. Mr. Metzger was just talking about how leaving something open for the clinic to do whatever they want. Well, if we're going to further tie the hands of the administration in any negotiating that they could do, I think that's probably not good. So, while I'm in favor of having the citizens vote on an issue as important as this, I think we have to be very careful on exactly what they're voting for.
Okay. Sam O'Leary?
Thanks.
Thanks. I have a pretty clear answer on this one, I think. I do not support the charter amendment issue that's been put forward. I absolutely support the right of the voters to decide, even the hospital issue. But I think that we already have that ability built into the charter. There's an existing referendum provision in the charter that would allow the electorate, if they felt so inclined, to refer any measure that council passes, almost, to referendum. So I think that we have the tools that we need in the toolbox already as an electorate, as a citizenry in Lakewood to engage directly on this issue. But I think that the charter amendment that's been put forward adds an additional layer of complication. Even if the citizenry had, you know, was in agreement with council, it would still require an extensive process, possible cost to the city. And I think that we are better served letting the electorate truly decide for themselves. And I think that the best way to do that is to let them read what council has passed, after council has passed it, and decide at that point whether or not they want to hold a referendum on that.
Mr. Litten?
I, like the others, support the will of the people, whatever that would be. If they choose to pass a charter amendment, I would be obligated, as a potential city councilman, to uphold that charter in whatever form it's written. However, the charter amendment, as it's currently written, does have some concerns for me with regard to the wording, of course. With regard to, you know, I said before how healthcare in Lakewood, if we're going to have it, we need a partner. And I fear that this charter amendment would do a lot of things to scare away potential partners down the road, both now and down the road.
Okay. Mr. Schneider?
Thank you. The, Bruce, you're at these council meetings, you're at the public meetings, you're out at city events. You see that there is a feeling amongst the public, whichever way you feel on the ultimate outcome of the hospital issue, that there hasn't been the proper transparency and accountability up to this point. And while council is making efforts to carry out the deliberations since the announcement of the deal in a public manner, the fact that this is still a debate, and we've got three questions in this debate about the hospital, shows you that I don't think folks are getting the level of satisfaction with the, with the process that had taken place up until January that they would hope. And I think that's what's brought about this amendment. An interesting byproduct of the amendment would be that with this public institution and public trust, it would almost require council to be in unison as to what outcome that they're advocating for, and that they deliver that message in an effective manner to the citizenry. And when you've got an ability for council to effectively communicate with the citizens to a satisfaction where they feel this is a transparent, accountable process, I'm in favor of such an effort.
Mr. Anderson?
I appreciate the comments that have been made. It reminds me of the fact that we live in a democratic republic. Sometimes folks elect individuals to represent them, and sometimes they want to take it in their own hands. I completely agree with Councilman O'Leary's assessment that there currently is a provision in the Second Amendment Charter that would allow for a referendum process in the case of the hospital or any other. So I'm not exactly sure if this proposed new tool, which just would offer the opportunity for a referendum, doesn't guarantee a referendum, they would, I don't know if this new tool is actually better or worse than what we currently have in the charter. I tend to believe that what we have in the charter is adequate. I also think, though, that, you know, this is local government. I'm a ward councilman. I'm the tip of the sword. Sam, you're the tip of the sword. Others might not be the tips of the sword. I mean, we get the first phone calls before the mayor does. We get the last phone call. We get, if we can't solve problems at this level, and if people start driving by City Hall, looking at it through their window and saying, oh, those guys, they just don't know what's going on, we have a lot more to lose in Lakewood than the hospital. We have to work not only to preserve the process concerning Lakewood Hospital, but people's confidence that what goes on in that building by the folks that they elect to represent them is transparent, is authentic, is unbiased, isn't sort of swayed by who sits on what board, or who's sort of got a hotline to an office somewhere. It just can't work like that. And I'm proud of council's role to date in slowing this thing down, getting their own unvarnished, objective viewpoint. And that's, that's what I'm going to continue to fight for. Credibility in this process is paramount.
All right. And?
You know, I'm always, it seems like I'm a caboose on the train. You want to restate the question for me?
Oh, sure. It's, a citizens group has put a charter issue on the ballot, on the November ballot, that if passed, would require a vote of residents before council could close or reduce services at Lakewood Hospital. Do you favor or oppose this measure, and why?
Right. Well, I just want to say that I think that this vehicle that's been put out there for the voters is wholly entitled to the, to the voters, right? You know, people who trusted with the, people in the public trust are bound by what the voters want to do, and they have every right to bring this to the table. And I think that it's wrong-headed, the way it's structured, just as wrong-headed as some of these terms are in the letter of intent and other agreements that are presented by the Cleveland. So I feel like the mayor and city council and the entire city is being handcuffed by either side of the equation and not having the chance to really fully deliberate the issue. The die is cast now, and I know that had everybody gone back in time, it would be nice to have made the announcement about the direction that the clinic would like to take this and the city's role, and then immediately refer it over for administrative action, and let council then immediately start holding public deliberation on it so that you could get the public input, and maybe it would have sidetracked some of the angst from opposition people. And maybe it wouldn't have, but here we are now, you know, so there wasn't the opportunity really to, to fully percolate the issue now, back in the past. So I'm really not in favor of the vote. I think it's really, it's really a handcuff for any action that can be taken, just as much as the proposal from the clinic.
Okay. Are there any follow-up comments on this one?
I'll just say, Bruce, that I think the lawsuit and this potential charter amendment are born from people being frustrated by how the process has gone to date and the lack of transparency in the process up till January. I think people were caught off guard by this. I certainly was. I can look at the camera and tell the folks in Lakewood that I had no idea that there was going to be a press conference at the beginning of January announcing by the Cleveland Clinic that they were going to close our hospital. I had no indication of that. So that leads me to wonder a little bit. And I've told folks on a number of occasions, my job isn't to trust people who come before the committee of the whole and give testimony. My job is to verify. And that's what I've been doing. That's what I intend to continue to do. And I'm not making a whole lot of friends, but it's about verification of what's presented for us. We need A triple-plus work for us to make our decision. And that's what I'm fighting for. We need to make the decision based on the best work possible. So there we are.
Okay. And does anybody, there are some references made, and I think I know what you're talking about because I followed this issue, but in terms of handcuffing the city, how, how do you think that, does anybody want to answer how they think it would handcuff the city?
Well, I could take a stab at it. I think it handcuffs the city in that, there's a couple of different paths it follows. It puts, the charter amendment, I think, will put the city in a position to have to deal with the issues surrounding this potential redevelopment on a whole different plane than anybody's really equipped to right now. And the other issue is that should the sentiment in the community change down the road, because this is pretty much written in stone, should it pass, then a whole nother revote's got to be taken on it. And I think that that just is not timely for development that needs to take place. I think it's sort of wrong-headed in terms of trying to cast a situation in amber when we know that circumstances change. I mean, what happens when the next wave of healthcare trends come through, and everybody goes, whoa, gosh, I guess we shouldn't have really locked it down like this because now we need another facility being built because medical advance isn't going so far, you know, another 10 years from now. So you just don't have any clue of the future.
Okay. Move on to the next question, unless anyone has a follow-up. All right. Now, I guess we're up to Sam O'Leary now. What ideas do you have for attracting more businesses to Lakewood?
Sure. That's a great question, and it's a fitting question at all times, but I think definitely, as we talk about downtown and possible redevelopment, it's a, it's a good question to ask. I think that there are a number of things that we have to do as a city and can do. And it needs to be a multifaceted approach. I don't think that there's a silver bullet for job attraction or economic growth. I think that if there was, we might have found it already. There's certainly a lot of ideas out there. So I think that for Lakewood, there are a couple of key things. Infrastructure investment that prepares our businesses for success. And I referenced that earlier with the potential fiber optic cable installation, which would potentially also be accessible to private business in addition to providing the city's schools and library with important infrastructure. So I think that there's that role that the city can play, and it's an important one, and that's investment in infrastructure that prepares us for success. I think that a second key component is to act as a willing partner and to seek out those kinds of public partnerships, but also private partnerships that can, can make for great success. And I think that one of those, an example, would be things as simple as shared parking agreements between businesses. Brokering those kinds of things is incredibly important. Parking, obviously, is always an issue in Lakewood, but we can do simple things like that that can make our businesses a lot more ready to succeed.
All right. Mr. Litten?
Sure. So I think Madison Avenue is the next frontier for Lakewood, as it's gotten sort of, you know, refurbished or resurfaced, once we've dealt through that over the course of this summer, that we will have a wonderful new boulevard for development. And I think setting us up for that was, was that redevelopment of the street. I'll add that the people need to come first in all of this. I still, no matter what businesses we attract, we need to make sure that we're doing it in a way that is equitable to the people who live just a few feet away from any new business that comes in. So my focus would be, set up the nest for any new business to come into Lakewood, of course, but also do so in a way that makes it so people don't have issues down the road, down the street with noise, or with parking issues, or what have you. We have enough of those, I think, in Lakewood as it is. It's, we are into parking issues, and we need to make sure that as we attract new development, we're also looking to make sure that people are made whole in their homes as well.
Okay. Mr. Schneider?
This is, there are those that would argue that the role of a city councilperson is jobs, jobs, and jobs. And to a certain extent, that is true. Economic development is key to our community. As an Assistant Law Director for the City of Parma Heights, one of my roles is to work with our Economic Development Department, as well as the mayor and council and the administration, to attract investment to the city. And like Lakewood, we're facing challenges where we're dealt less resources from the state to do so, and asked to do more with that. So we try to find creative ways, whether it's development programs like community investment corporations, community reinvestment areas, financial incentives. But to take a page from when I was a state representative, when I got into office, the first thing I did was meet with the 200 top employers in the community. That's what approach I would take as a ward councilman. Meet with every one of those 2,400 businesses, if possible, to identify what their needs are. From there, infrastructure investment is key, as Sam brought out. In addition to that, though, these kind of public-private partnerships, like Lakewood Alive, and hopefully something along those lines up on Madison, because Mr. Litten's correct, we do agree on some things, that Madison is a key area for investment. But by bringing about those public-private partnerships, we can address those needs of small businesses as well as large.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Lakewood needs to continue to be what it is and always has been. It's a neighborhood community. It's a bedroom community. We have 14,000 homes in Lakewood, the most densely populated chunk of real estate between Chicago and Manhattan. And, you know, I'm proud of my record on endorsing and proposing ordinances that strengthen our neighborhoods, that make sure that folks behave in an appropriate way and that their homes are maintained to certain standards. I own two triples as well as two single-family homes. Each of my triples, well, I'll just look at one triple in particular. I have five taxpaying citizens in this one triple. They're all employed, they all pay 1.5% of local tax. And that is having just as, well, if you put 10 doubles and triples together, that has just as much economic impact in Lakewood as the Burger King does on Detroit Avenue. And so it's about maintaining our housing stock, it's about preparing it for the next 100 years, and it's about making sure that every neighborhood meets and exceeds its potential because that's what will draw the neighborhood businesses in. There's a robust community, robust electorate, robust residents who are paying taxes, putting into the system. It's, you can't manufacture that. It is what Lakewood is. It's a neighborhood bedroom community. You walk to school, you walk home, you walk to the store, you can ride, you can bike. It's a vibrant community. That's what's going to continue to draw the economic development in Lakewood.
Okay. Mr. Metzger?
Who said silver bullet? Was it you?
I think so.
Sam said silver.
Says there wasn't a silver bullet.
Well, there is a silver bullet. I'm not going to go all unicorn and rainbow on us right here. I think we, we've come to a crossroads in Lakewood now, where we have actually gotten a silver bullet passing through town. There's been really unprecedented development in terms of commerce that's come in, restaurants, housing, repair streets, and, you know, Lakewood's support of same-sex couples and all that kind of openness and sensitivity that's going to attract people and bring people to the area. It's going to maintain the existing community, and it's going to grow the new community in the future based on reuse of old resources, like the school that was torn down over in our ward here.
McKinley?
Sure. And, you know, I'm really pleased to have been appointed on city council, thanks to David and other people, because I get to have a voice in a lot of all that.
To the planning commission, with the city council.
Whatever. Sorry, I'm a little premature on that. But I'm really pleased to be involved in that because you can see, and these guys all see it on council because they have the vote, follow through on that, all the different developments that are coming through that we have a voice for and oversee in Lakewood. So that creates a critical mass, gives you some churn, and it really keeps people interested in our community. And that's, that's, I think we've got a little bit of a silver bullet going on, even though I haven't been appointed to council.
Okay. Just real quick, if I may. When I was first appointed to city council, I believe that there were 13 or 14 municipalities in Chicago County that were in a 1.5% payroll tax or less. There's now three. Five years later, there's only three left, and Lakewood's still one of those three. We're still at 1.5%. Rocky River just voted theirs in by the will of the people last year. They're at 2% now. So we're still at 1.5%. Regardless of the issues surrounding the process of Lakewood Hospital, with the cuts in local government fund, with the estate tax fund being gutted, Lakewood, in my four years on council, I've helped to pass four budgets. We've been in the black in each one of those budgets, and we're still maintaining highly effective city services. So I think part of this vibrancy of the neighborhood is delivering good government. And I think the current administration, I like to think that I'm part of, the current council that's helped sort of create the path for Lakewood to have good local government to a certain degree, especially as it concerns fiscal responsibility, infrastructure investments, bond ratings, all those things that create the will of folks wanting to come to live and operate a business in Lakewood.
Okay. Mr. Beegan, I don't think you had.
Thank you very much, Bruce. I disagree a little bit with Mr. Snyder, and I don't think that there's any elected official, be it city, county, state, or federal, that can create a job. I think it's, it's used a lot. But the, really, the role of government, especially local government here, is to make sure that the stage is set for the right economic development. As I mentioned before, served on the board for Lakewood Alive, you know, full three terms, nine years, and prior to that on the board for Lakewood Community Progress, Inc. And what we were doing during that time since 2003 is setting the stage. Mr. Snyder has it right. Lakewood Alive is a great organization with all the community leaders getting together figuring out what is the common direction we need to have, and economic development is on the top of the list. So serving as chair of the Downtown Lakewood Design Committee, for instance, is changing, what we did is change Detroit Avenue. It used to be like four lanes with no turning lane. Just switching that out, to put a turning lane in, put parking on the side, putting a bike lane in, helps set the stage for the downtown development that has been happening since. And we've copied that same approach up on Madison, and I think that's going to help move Madison forward. I do want to add, though, that housing is probably the most important economic driver in Lakewood. Businesses, we have a couple of key ones, as far as the hospital and the schools, and the city being big employers, but our housing stock, it is, Lakewood is a city of homes. And so the direction that our housing goes is going to determine the future economically for Lakewood. for Lakewood.
And my apologies to Paul. My assignment to remind the community, we haven't raised their taxes. I realized that we hadn't gone around the horn, so I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Does anyone, you would?
Yeah, Bruce, I would like to jump in. In addition to what I said previously, and to borrow a line from our Economic Development Director Drew Seiley, in Lakewood, housing is economic development, and that point's been underscored a couple of times. But I think that it is 100% correct that the strides that we've made through housing first, in addition to the more tangible and visible successes along Detroit and Madison, has really set the stage in a big way, in addition to the infrastructure investments and partnerships that we've built throughout the city. So I think that Lakewood does have a bright economic future, and I think that we've been working hard at that for a long time.
If you look at the numbers, Sam, Lakewood emerged from the bubble collapse a lot better than our sister cities around this county. And I think it has a little bit to do with the diversity of our income streams, but it also has to do with the thickness and the network of our community. So I appreciate your comments there.
Okay. Can we go on to the next question or any other response? Okay. Flooding was a big issue this spring. What can the city do to address flooding, Mr. Litten?
Well, I'm no expert on some of this stuff, but I will say that when I walked Chase Avenue, I came into contact with, I think, at least 11 different residents who had substantial flooding in their basements. And one of the possible solutions would be to find ways for people to get, I believe it's some sort of a stop-gap valve or something along that line, again, I'm no expert, that can help with stopping that from happening in their basements. It can be pricey, but it could be something possibly that our city could look to help people with or subsidize in some fashion.
Okay. Mr. Schneider?
I think probably everybody at this table who's walked their ward experienced folks who were on the wrong end of flooding this year. I know the area of Chase that he's talking about. I met some folks on Bell as well, and some folks on Marloth that all experienced flooding, heavy flooding this summer, multiple times. I talked to folks about different solutions. The bottom line is we've got sewer system where there are some bottlenecks that cannot accommodate the kind of flow that we're getting, particularly with the new development along Detroit. And as those streets that flow from Detroit down to Clifton pick up more and more rainwater, the sewers aren't equipped for it. One of the suggestions that one of the residents had is, could the city please study rain barrels? I know a lot of communities are really looking hard at that alternative as a way to slow down that water flow in order to address the flooding. But overall, as a city, in addition to creating access so that citizens could come forward with ideas and proposals and be heard on issues like flooding, we've got to make sure that as we study development, and government does have a role in development, I would say, though, it's more dependent on the businesses than the government, but as we study the planning and development of our city, we have to keep those kind of infrastructure issues in mind.
Yeah, I think there's a number of points already touched on. One, it's the continuous individual inspection of our system underneath the roads. There's some trouble spots, but they seem to be habitual trouble spots. I know there's a couple in Ward One. Second thing is that government has played a role in trying to create situations where the water gets slowed down before it gets into the system. We've introduced the notion of bioswells in certain residents, or I'm sorry, in certain commercial areas, such as the back of the YMCA. That's meant to contain water, just to keep it out of the system until the storm goes away, then it eventually gets to the system. The Gitgo on Buns also has a bioswelle, and there's one on McDonald's. So there's more of these bioswells, these containment systems, if you will, being built into new development, and I think that's important. A third thing is that I think the city has encouraged, maybe not to the degree that Mr. Schneider suggested, but has encouraged, when appropriate, disconnect your downspout, so it goes through your front lawn, and get slowed down by the grass and by the dirt before it goes right into the system. Because I think the issue is, when we get these, you know, 100-year storms, which seems to happen twice every summer and spring now, the system just isn't equipped to handle that much water. And you can put the stop valves in, but eventually that water's got to go somewhere. And that's a save for your home, for your basement, but it's not a save for the neighbor's basement, because that's where it's going to go. So it needs to be more comprehensive, multifaceted.
Okay. Mr. Metzger?
You know, I think, it's not intended to be heartless, but people need to really investigate their insurance options a lot better, too, because, you know, it's a huge financial burden for the city to update and maintain the water drainage system already that it's responsible for, but a lot of responsibility unfortunately stops at the curb, and it's hard to envision the scenario where the city and taxpayers are going to finance pocketed areas where you're getting flooded. It's kind of a shame, but that's just the system we're in. Maybe with the new rate increases that are going to be generated out of the Northeast Ohio Sewer District, they can contribute something to a program that'll help residents and communities that are involved in that pay off. But, you know, outside of that, it's a tricky problem.
Mr. Beegan?
Yeah, I mean, I think you probably find all of us agree, right? If we had an unlimited checkbook, we could fix the problem, no problem, replace everybody's sewers into separate storm and sanitary lines. But we have a 100-year-old infrastructure. It is being replaced as we can, as funds are available. The city is aware of what those areas are, and when funds become available, those are repaired. In the meantime, there are measures that can be taken as far as individuals doing something with rain barrels or doing splash blocks instead of sending it into the system, bioswells. There's all kinds of things that we can do in the meantime. It's not going to be a permanent solution until we actually get all the work in the city, and it's going to take more than just a couple of years. It's going to be a long term, and I think the city's right in targeting which ones to do, hitting those hard ones first and moving that forward.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I think that this is another non-silver bullet issue in terms of there's no singular public works project that we could really hit the gas on and get it done, and then no one's house would flood, unfortunately. And along those same lines, home flooding unfortunately is caused by a variety of issues. You're correct that in Lakewood, we typically see the issue where people are getting water backing up into their basement. But I spoke to a number of residents who had spent significant sums having their basements waterproofed, only to be incredibly frustrated this spring when their basement's still flooded as a product of water backing up through the lines going out to the street. So I think that the city can play an important role in terms of educating residents so that they can make smart investments with their own money, and to some extent, explore the possibility of, you know, how do we take a citywide strategy towards investments that can help abate this problem to some extent? And I think that we are doing that as a part of the city's Integrated Wet Weather Improvement Program, or I-WIP, as no one calls it. And I think that we've made some good strides there. We'll continue to make good strides under the supervision of the federal and state EPA and work with our residents who are understandably impatient on this issue.
Okay. And so we finally made it down to the end of the table. Mr. Schneider, and this is the opportunity where we'll go around if the candidates want to ask questions of the folks they're running against or any of the other folks who are on the panel here today running for council.
The question I would ask, I would ask, we each get one question?
Yeah, one question each, right.
I would ask Mr. O'Leary as one of our newest council people and a fellow attorney. Your experience on council has come during a very difficult time for the city. You've obviously heard the subject matter of this, front part of this debate, talking about transparency and accountability. What do you think that council could do to make sure that we don't run into another situation, whether it's a large issue or small, where transparency and accountability of our public officials are not questioned?
That's an excellent question, and I think that the answer to that is twofold, really. I think that there's an element that I think is important to implement in everything that council does, and that's to not only avoid conflicts of interest, which we often have a legal and fiduciary responsibility to avoid, but also to avoid the perception of a conflict. And that's a very, very difficult thing to do sometimes. Sometimes it's not really 100% within the realm of your control, you know, what other parties are involved in something. And so I think that it is incredibly important, though, that we always strive to never jeopardize that public confidence and public trust by avoiding even the perception of any type of conflict. So, and when we can, enacting hard and fast rules to avoid that perception, which, again, you know, can be a difficult thing to do, to define, and in particular, when folks are in a part-time capacity, and it can be difficult and are involved in, you know, as a pillar of the community in many ways, that can be difficult. But it's incredibly important, and I think we're seeing that throughout. So I think that that would be one portion of the transparency issue.
I'm sorry, we are running short on time.
Okay, sure thing.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, did you want to ask any questions?
I have no questions, just a comment. I appreciate Mr. Metzger's service on the planning commission. I think he does great work. Everything that I hear, not that I don't want it, people need to tell, but I know that he does good work, and he serves Lakewood well, and I appreciate his service to Lakewood in that capacity.
Thanks.
Mr. Metzger?
Look, I think we've got a pretty strong council that's out there dragging these issues out in the light and working on them pretty wholeheartedly now, you know, that the ball's got rolling. And I appreciate, in the odd way, that the whole hospital issue got dragged into the light is crucial to getting a good public understanding of it, but there's more issues than the hospital on the citywide. And I know, like I said, we've got a strong council working on these issues. I think I could make it stronger. I have a lot of experience in the public sector and managing a lot of public sector-type work, but right now, as it stands, I wouldn't criticize anybody.
Mr. Beegan?
You know, I don't have any questions. I mean, I've known many of these gentlemen for a long time, and have I been involved in Lakewood in many different organizations, serving my community. I've seen a lot of them there for a long time, and they've been there. So I think most of the candidates here are going to serve us well. They have been serving us well. We are going through a little bit of a rough patch right now in Lakewood. There's no doubt with the hospital. But again, I think getting everybody on the same page is kind of crucial. Not everybody's going to agree, but if we can agree in the general direction, I think that's the way we need to move Lakewood forward. And to Mr. O'Leary's comment, you know, what can council do to make himself more transparent? You know, as soon as it's presented to them with the announcement, that's when the public process started. Before that, it was, it did not involve the city as much because it was between the Lakewood Hospital Association and the clinic. So as soon as that came out, you know, it became public, and that's when the public debate and discussion started. So I'd like to see us as a community come together and not let it divide us. Again, I don't think everybody needs to agree, but agree in a common direction, I think, is healthy for our community. We've been on a very good roll these last couple of years, even through the economic downturn, 2007, 2008. We've been very blessed in our community. I want to keep it going in that same direction.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary, do you have a question for anyone?
I don't, but I'd reiterate my thanks to everyone for sharing this time tonight and having the conversation, and Bruce for hosting. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Litten?
You know, I don't really have any major questions. One concern I have for Lakewood, having been here a while and fully intending to be here for as long as I possibly can. I moved to Chesapeake about a year and a half ago from Wyandotte, and I fully intend to be wheeled out of that house at some point or another. One of the things that has concerned me about Lakewood over the last few years, though, is some of the turnover we've had on council and things like that, people, you know, looking for other things. And I guess I wanted to ask, maybe of all of us, I know I would not run for any other elected office. I love my day job. I love what I do for a living, and want to keep doing it, and council's a good way for me to both support the city I live in and, you know, do what I love to do for a living in helping people, young, disabled, the poor, et cetera. And so I guess I want to know from all the candidates, do you fully intend to serve out a full term on council, or would you potentially run for other office?
Okay. Well, Mr. Schneider?
Very good. Since nobody was asking me any questions, I was hoping I'd get another chance to speak. My intention is to be the best ward councilman that I could be. What brought me to this race is when I saw that there was going to be an open seat in my ward, I looked at my experience, 15 years at the city, county, and state levels of government, and I thought, you know what, I've had a lot of fun working in the city of Parma Heights and helping another community, working with council, working with the mayor, the administration, the boards and commissions. And I could probably bring a level of experience that most people don't see in this kind of a race to my own community. And just even running for this office has been a lot of fun. My full intention is to be the best ward councilman that I could be. I have no other pie in the sky ideas in my mind. You know, I live my life one day at a time. At the same time, what has happened here in the city over the last couple of years, whether it's the hospital situation or other issues, have shown experience matters, and that's why I'm proud to bring experience to this ward race. But that's my goal, to be a good ward councilman.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I pledged to the community and to Pat four years ago that I would serve a complete term, and I have, and I will pledge to you so again. I have no interest in serving in other, other capacity or pursuing any other elected position should I be chosen by the great folks at Ward One to have me represent them for four more years.
Mr. Metzger?
You know, I would look forward to four years of 24-hour-a-day calls and working for a quarter an hour, although Sam said it was, you know, like maybe 30 cents an hour gross, because, you know, it's kind of a labor of love, and it's really, it's really a community involvement thing. Since I've been involved in various different things in the community, I think it's a nice opportunity to try and step up and take a leadership role, and I don't see any reason why you wouldn't want to do it for four years, but that's about it, you know? And if I moved to Ward Three, I'd run against you, John.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Beegan?
No, I think my wife would shoot me if I wanted to do anything else added to my plate. No, I would anticipate serving a full term for sure. At least two is what I would think. And then I think it's time to move on. The city's going to grow and need some other candidates to move in. The issues are going to change. It's really a call to civic duty for me. As I said, I raised my family here. I've lived in Ward Two for 15 years. My business is in Ward Two. This is my home, and I feel that call to serve on council. And again, fulfill a full term for sure, probably two.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
Thanks. And I do appreciate the question as well. I would say that I would anticipate to serve out the full term, but I do, like my opponent, feel particularly called to public service. I believe I'm the youngest council person in the history of the city of Lakewood and knew from a very early age that helping people locally is what I want to do. And in a similar way to Mr. Schneider's professional work as an Assistant Law Director and Prosecutor, I also, in my day job, handle legal issues for municipalities, and I look forward to being able to serve in whatever way I'm called upon to. So I enjoy my service with Lakewood tremendously, and I would not say that I have mastered the position by any stretch at this point, but I certainly would hope to in the future.
What about you, Bruce? Do you pledge to be here in four years? I have every intention to be, yes.
Four more years. Four more years.
Okay. And I think we made it all the way around the table, and I know that we've run over, and I hope that it has been informative for everybody who's watching. I appreciate all of you taking part. Please check back to Cleveland.com to read stories about the debates, issues, and candidates for the upcoming election. Early voting starts October 6th, and thanks again for joining us.